3 o'clock, June 2nd. Got a special call meeting agenda. Meetings calling to order. Councilman Best, if you'll lead us in our invocation.
Chief Rice. May he have the Lord, please bless this meeting and all participants involved. Please allow all parties to be friends and professional as we conduct the business of the city. I ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The adoption of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes to the adoption as the agenda's written?
As it is?
Yes, sir, I do. I just don't know what to call you. Do I call you Mayor Protem? Interim mayor? Mayor?
I'm just the Mayor Protem.
Some things you shouldn't call me.
Just don't call me darling.
Don't call me darling.
Okay, let's see. Under E, governing body. I prepared the agenda before I had left for vacation, so under E3B, Downtown Development Authority, it lists one opening. There's now two. So there was one why I was received, why I was gone. The second is, he is in Boy 9. We have a special guest and out of consideration of the time, Mr. Paget has to make it to other cities. So if the council would oblige and move him way to the top and allow him to go first regarding the joint resolution for Carroll County pre-disaster.
What did we call him, Tim? B1, B1A? And then?
I'd just leave him as nine, just let him go first.
We could go 98765.
Say that again. Okay. He taught math, too. Okay, got it.
And then I'll be representing finance. Our CFO's husband's having surgery, so I'll do the best I can there.
So we put David in finance.
Any other additions, deletions?
I move we approve the agenda.
All those in favor? Council updates.
Other than to just thank, sorry. Other than to just thank some of our employees that are working 24/7 to take care of things that mitigate disasters or things that happen in the middle of the night or whatever it is, just really appreciative for that. And also for our police officers when we read about some of the things they have to deal with.
Second that. One thing I'd like to point out to the audience is, as you notice, this is a special call meeting. This is not a work session. So if we vote on an agenda item, we are within our rights. So it is not a work session. This is in lieu of a work session. It will not be a work session for the June council meeting. We have a special call meeting today, and then our June council meeting will be Tuesday, June the 7th. Public comment. If you want to step forward, please state your name and address for the record.
I don't know why I get that warning.
It only applies to you, Clint.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor Protem and council. Clint Chance Library Board. Wanted to give you all an update. We're not aware, Southwire has undergone some new executive leadership. They have a new CEO, and I've been in some negotiations with them for months and months and months, and so finally that has come to fruition. I got a call yesterday that they will be pledging $25,000 towards the new library facility. So very happy to hear about that. That brings our private and corporate gift giving up to $65,000 for the new facility. So we're very pleased with that. Also want to give a quick update that the facility hopefully is going to be turned over from the construction company to us, meaning to the city and to the regional library system toward the end of this month. With that happening, our GCI institution will come in. They're in charge of all the cabinetry work, all the furnishings, tables and chairs and so forth. So I don't want to give any specific date timelines, but you can get an idea. It's probably going to be a month or two after we take over the building to get all the furnishings in there. So I know the community is anxious to know about the transition period, so we're still looking hopefully August or September. Here again, please don't hold me to any dates, but that's kind of tentatively what we're looking at. As we know more moving forward, we'll let you know. But I did want to let you know the good news about Southwire. Thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you, Clint. Any other comments? Clint, what's your, is your date still August? 1st of August is what you're looking at pretty much right now?
September. Once the building's turned over to the construction company, we'll be able to put a more definitive plan down until that happens. I don't want to speak to a day, but tentatively August, September, somewhere along.
Before school starts?
No. Not even close.
You mean when school should start?
Let's just be safe and say before Thanksgiving. Maybe this year.
Yes, sir.
So if Chief Manseur doesn't have anything, we'll go to Mr. Milliron. I thought you might have a public comment. I didn't know. Mr. Milliron?
We're going to bring Mr. Paget up.
Okay.
We're putting it in front of the files.
All right, Tim, we're going to go to...
Go change it again, Tim. Come on.
Yeah, just come on.
He's all the way at the front, but we could always arrange a police escort if we need to, you know, if you run late. He's got to get to a bunch of other cities.
And I don't want to get caught speeding. Yeah, checks in the mail. Mayor and council, that's what you're acting as, mayor, so I can't do all that. Enter on the pro term, all that. Anyhow, my name is Tim Paget. I serve as the Emergency Management Director for Carroll County. And we started working about a year and a half ago, and Janet has attended most of those meetings on this hazard mitigation plan. It's a requirement by the Federal Emergency Management Agency and by Georgia Emergency Management. We had a bunch of committee meetings, and our planner, Amy Goosby, put this together along with everyone. And the federal government and the state government has already approved the plan. I know that's kind of backwards to anything else in stone, but that's how it worked with this plan. And basically what it does is every time there is a disaster federally declared, we have been declared 14 times in Carroll County, and that includes the municipalities, then there's free disaster mitigation money available to help mitigate the next disaster. The best example I can give you is that if you had a pipe to wash out and you replaced it with a 72-inch pipe, and it was originally a 60-inch pipe, they will pay for that 12 additional inches under this plan, as well as other projects that we identified in here. And I think it's a win-win. We get some money back to us, and unfortunately, as y'all know, we have a lot of disasters on this side of the state. So I would ask that y'all, you know, consider adopting it unless Janet has anything to add.
I'd like to make a motion that, I mean, I've gone through this. I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and adopt this. And we just won't vote on Tuesday night. We've all got all the plans and everything on it, and if we adopt it, we can go ahead and get it signed and get it to the clerk and get it on the books.
Second. All those in favor?
Thank y'all so much, and thank Janet for working on it all.
Alyssa, you going to get that for me to sign?
Okay.
Thank you, Tim.
You need a police escort now. We can probably work that out.
I'm going to Wattsburg now.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Thank y'all.
All right, next thing will be finance and in Sarah's absence, Mr. Milliron.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Yes. All right, the first is some budget amendments. The city council previously purchased land that was adjacent to the water treatment plant. That was the purchase of 300 North Van Wirt Road. There listed in your book is the purchase price of the property. We did an appraisal. We did an inspection. There was a legal estimate. They do title and also handle the closing, among other deed recording. So this is a budget amendment. This is a transfer from your appropriated fund balance to the sites line item in the amount of $47,464.42 for that property.
We want to take these one at a time.
It's up to you.
You want to vote on them one by one? I move to approve this $47,000.
Have a motion to approve. I hear a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Good. We can get this so Wes won't meet Tuesday night.
There you go. All right, David.
The second one is, I had communicated to, via council, on a proposed transfer of funds. As you know, under our finance ordinance, the CFO can move money between one department to another, provided that we come to the council at the next meeting and alert you as to what we did. I went an additional step and surveyed the council and asked that you reply back to me to make sure that you were comfortable with this. When we originally did the 2016 budget, we put specific money in there for vans for boot camp crews. I'm very pleased to say that our fleet maintenance crew, Charlie Davis and Nick Griffin, had both done stellar jobs at upgrading one van where we did not have to purchase a vehicle. So after last month, the council approved a take-home policy, and you knew that there was going to be eight cars that were going to be necessary. So what I simply did was we moved $26,502 from the boot camp crew line item that was for the van and moved it into the police department vehicles line item. And we have purchased a fourth police vehicle for this year. Normally, you purchase three. So this is a budget amendment for $26,502 to cover that cost.
I was under the understanding this was a community service. That's not boot camp.
Again, it is community service, but it's boot camp. It was the same thing. If you look at your budget, and you're absolutely right, Councilman. So when you did the budget last year, we had community service. However, as part of that budget, we were phasing out community service, but we didn't know that until the budget was adopted. So the actual line item that she's written is boot camp crews, but this is the community service, which is your boot camp crew. So there was two vans budgeted in there. So it's just sort of semantics, if you will.
Well, when it comes time to have a review next year, that may be an issue. I mean, community service is certainly not the boot camp crew.
That's correct. That's correct. However, all we did was simply rename community service, which is no longer in existence, and we know that it's the boot camp crews.
How much money's left in community service?
On the balance to pay off the contracts for the four plus whatever was left over maintenance-wise from the second van. So, because we had to outfit them with the radios, the walkie-talkies, all of that other stuff, plus the equipment. So we knew that we had ample money for the one additional police car.
I don't have an issue with the Explorer for the new SRO. I do have an issue with calling it community service and the boot camp crews. I make a motion to accept it.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All those in favor?
I'll go back in and ask her on the semantics of why it's called boot camp crews.
Did you have a ledger line spelled out boot camp crew, or was it all considered community service?
Well, it was community service, but it was on the capital side, not on the actual operating. So there was a capital budget that was called community service, and in there it had two vans listed for the capital purchase. Again, I'll ask our CFO on the boot camp crew, but this money is specifically only coming out of the capital side of community service, which there was only two vans listed in that line item.
Just note that in your finance that this boot camp, parentheses, community service, so we know what's going on.
Yes, sir. All right, the last one is, the council approved an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Temple for financial services and code enforcement. However, now that you've approved that, we know that we're going to have money coming in as receivables. So whenever you show money coming in and show money going out, you actually have to balance it. So this is a budget amendment to create the line item to show the intergovernmental agreement, show what the eight months of 2016 is going to be revenue coming in, because then we also have to pay it out as far as salaries and software, et cetera. So this is only reflecting the agreement that you already previously approved, but we have to be able to show the bucket of the money coming in and where it goes out.
So that's the missing additional, 28,000 dollars, because this is only for eight months, because the original contract was 80-plus thousand.
That's correct. We can only account for what will actually materialize in the eight months, and in this case, it's $54,554.
Move to approve the budget adjustment.
All those in favor?
Okay, this is informational only at this point. This is your monthly financial analysis. This is April 2016. You should see that all line items at this point should be at or below 33.3% if we are tied with the budget. So out of respect to our CFO, I certainly can go through this, but she generates this report. We get different reports internally, but I'll certainly answer any questions that you have. You'll notice as far as your overall line items, we are seeing substantial increases in, for instance, some of our revenue areas. As far as your budget status, none of those have exceeded the 33.3% threshold as of April 2016, and then you see your line items.
Only question I have, because solid waste has been an ongoing problem with costing us, and I see the expenses are down some. You want to explain a little bit of that? We've been trying, I know we've been trying to get that so that it's not losing so much money.
Yeah, the actual expense on solid waste, waste industries, of course, did do a price increase. We simply passed that price increase off immediately back to the users. We also have solid waste that we actually go out and pick up. For instance, once the data hits for the cleanup and the county bills us, for instance, all of that will hit our bottom line. Our staff worked pretty excessive hours during that annual cleanup. So we're always in the rears with that specific billing and overall billing. So I think that's where you'll see some of that expense. And for instance, I know just out of one location, we yanked out two truckloads of tires.
So in simple language, what you're telling me is don't get excited about that drop.
No, the...
We're about to get hit.
I'll tell you, the auditors have already flagged solid waste. So when they come and talk to you about the most current, yeah, solid waste is already one that they've flagged, and they're going to give guidance as to what you guys need to do or might do or want to do.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's still a red flag one.
That's sounding like an increase. What's a ballpark figure of an, what do you think there?
The, you know, we had talked about solid waste, but we didn't really go into great detail, because I was trying to, and still am trying to negotiate out this deal with the state, and my window's narrowing, because we've got until July 1 to get that agreement moving. The physical solid waste, there's several things. I recall when we had that discussion, you had quoted your numbers. Well, the senior citizen discount, you know, I learn so much every single day. Everyone thinks I know everything. I don't. And don't put that to miss. So, if my wife's listening, correct that. I was totally wrong. I was a moment of amnesia. But anyway, so the senior citizen discount for water then passes on to your other services, including sanitation. So you are trekking across the board, because the normal sanitation just raised, and I think it's, I think it's $18 a month. I'll have to look at the latest figures. Whereas with the discount, I think yours is what, 13?
13.
Yeah, 13, and even yours slightly just went up. So you're trekking across the board. That's just cost. It's just flat-out cost. We've not audited. We did audit the water, and about 7% of those getting the discount were not eligible to get the discount. So they have ceased to get the discount, and that was with two sets of mailings and a lot of PR. So I think that's also going to help us a little, because that means they don't get the water discount, they don't get the sanitation discount, et cetera, so.
It's not a popular thing to give somebody a discount and then take it back. So, very short pontification. Statistically, whether it's nationally, whatever. Young families usually are at a lower threshold. A lot of times we give a senior discount, because we say, hey, listen, people earn a fixed income. I understand, I have senior citizens in my family, too. But to just automatically give it, because you're a senior, I think that's something that needs to get looked at, because young families are also struggling, too, but we can't give it to them, too, and we can't, we can't take care of the, we're not bringing in to pay for what we're offering as far as service. So I mean, that may be a bad thing. Maybe we shouldn't go down that road, but we've got to do something. We have to raise rates on everybody or something. Nobody wants to raise rates. I didn't even know there was a senior discount on it.
Just speak for yourself, right? There's three seniors sitting in front of you.
Yeah, I think the seniors really appreciate it, because they didn't get any raise from the government for the last couple of years, so, you know, they need it.
I'm just saying, well, some people need it. Some people need it, but statistically, seniors are in a higher percentage threshold of bringing in income than young families are. So who gets it? That's all. I'm sorry. I don't want to beat a dead horse.
Your discount certainly is going to be larger for a young family than it would be a senior. Senior's not going to use near as much water.
I'm not saying to give it for young families. I'm talking about, we need to consider that every time we think we're going to give a discount. Hey, I'm as happy as anybody that $900 is going to come off our property taxes from the Carroll County education thing, you know? Yes, it'll make life a little easier. I'm just saying that statistically...
It's hard to take care of everybody.
It is.
From the staff perspective?
That's right. But somebody's going to pay for it.
The seniors actually have lived long enough to earn it, so give them a break.
Property taxes. Amen. I hate to see anybody lose their home just because they can't pay these absorbent taxes.
I had a phone call from a lady this past week, and she was jumping all over me about us cutting her water off. And I asked her, and I applaud the city for their stance, and that is, they take a firm stance, and there aren't any exceptions to it. If you, in this particular bill, I think where she was four months behind, and she had been sent a notice on our bill, could we have sent her an additional notice? Could we have called her? We probably could have done a lot of things, but bottom line was, and this is exactly what I told her, I said, I am so sorry, but if that had have been me, my water would have been turned off as well. So the stance that the city takes is, you take it for all residents.
Everybody's treated equal. That's the way it ought to be, yeah.
Should be.
Should have been done 45 days.
Correct. And as we've been auditing them, you're absolutely right.
Correct.
And they do get a notice of delinquency. They do get a bill. They do get a robo-call. They get a lot of opportunities to do the right thing.
Well, you know, you're not going to hear about any of the additional calls that one might get if she just had her water turned off. But anyway, I just, I told her that I would certainly bring that up. I did, but I told her that day on the phone that I saw it, that everyone was treated equal. I didn't see any differential in between it. Mr. Milliron, anything else?
I'll finish up with, when the auditors come and chat, you know, with their recommendations, that's probably at that point to really dive, go a deep dive on some areas and decide if the council wants to look at policy. I know on the sanitation, there's only real one equitable way to do it, but that would be a pendulum swing, and that's the pay-as-you-throw, yeah, process. You know, if you put six bags out there, and, you know, you get charged for six bags because you bought those six bags. So you can fill those bags as much as you want. So if you're only one person living there and you only throw one bag out, well, you've only paid for one bag, which you have to buy the bags. So that's the only equitable way that cities have found to resolve all of this, you know, cost differential, you know? Well, of course, then soon as you have, you know, a family that's got three or four or five kids, they'll say, well, I'm generating more garbage. It's killing me. I have to buy these bags. So you won't resolve the concerns, but you would do the equitable. But like I said, probably the more appropriate time to talk about that is, let's wait for our auditors to come back, because you're going to get an audit at a decent time this year, and you'll have it, you know, we have until June 30th, and they've come, they've been here, they were doing inventory today, but they're wrapping up, and we're well on schedule to present that audit to you, I believe, in July.
Move on to Part B of our agenda. Ms. Hyde. And council, if there's any of these items that you feel that we need more time on, we certainly can pass them until Tuesday, not a problem. But if each of you have studied them and looked at them and you think they're good, if we vote on them, we just won't do it Tuesday. I just don't, I don't want the audience or the Villarickens out there to think that we're bypassing something that's important, because if we need to hold this aside, certainly, it's fine. I know by me.
Should we have something in our package for B1 and B2?
You do not have anything for B1. B1 is alcohol license for SwiftySave. We have not gotten the background check back from the applicant at this point.
So we pass that one to Tuesday?
Hope you have that by Tuesday.
But you have his license, but you have his application.
We have his application.
Okay.
I've got one question for council. So I just gave you your monthly financial report. Do you want Sarah to give you another monthly financial report on Tuesday? Or are you good with what I just gave you?
It wouldn't hurt, it wouldn't hurt to get maybe a brief synopsis for the sake of the people that come to the meeting that night.
I'll leave it on the agenda.
Especially if something changes between now and then.
We're good.
Yeah, and we're shifting money from one department to another. It's a good idea for people to...
Oh, yeah. Well, you won't, your April's closed out, so this is, you're good through then.
I don't have anything for number two also.
B2 was an item that I brought to you all last month. The city attorney pointed out to me after the meeting that the text of the ordinance that I brought you said, reduce the minimum square footage of the lot and not the building. It should have said building. If you'd like me to bring that back Tuesday and let you see the text before you vote on it, I'll be glad to do that. Otherwise, it's just a word change from...
Just to clarify, is this where, this is the ordinance with the downtown?
Right.
Where we're decreasing the footage so that they can't build something five times the size of a Walgreens in the middle of the historic downtown?
This had to do with minimum lot size versus building size.
I think we need to put this one for Tuesday also, so we'll have a copy to look at.
Okay.
You know, kind of make the change obvious to us.
Okay. And item number three is ORD-07-16-UDC. This is a change to the ordinance regarding cell phone tower conditional use permits. Right now, it goes through the regular process of a 45-day period in which it gets heard by the planning commission as well as the city council. You all changed that requirement a couple of months ago, and it was pointed out that the federal government has only given us a limited amount of time to approve those cell phone towers before it gets automatic approval by the federal government. So we're proposing to add a 10-day... So, we're proposing to add a ten-day limit to the, to that cellphone tower application. So that would mean a special call meeting would have to be held in order to condition, to consider a, a cellphone tower application. I am proposing also that we raise the fee for a cellphone tower application to five hundred dollars to account for that special call meeting.
And that's the max we can raise?
That is the maximum allowed.
And that's from two, two-fifty is the norm?
Three hundred is, is what we charge for conditional use.
I, I had brought that up, because if we have to have a special call meeting, we have to have a special call meeting, and with the governing laws, the way that we have them, we have to be paid for that, for that particular meeting. So I just think that, I think that the general public is already paying for the use of a cellphone. Now they're having to pay for a cellphone tower company to come in and pay for us to hasten up their, that thing, that, that's just me.
But just for clarification, isn't the reason we're doing that is because we want it to be a conditional use permit?
Right. You did want to provide that conditional use requirement for cellphone towers.
Choose one by one, rather than giving y'all staff the power to just go ahead and pass it through. The government's requiring it be approved within forty-five days?
Right now, our ordinance requires forty-five days. We're reducing our requirement to ten da- ten days, that's what the proposal is, in order to meet the federal requirement, which I believe is fifteen days.
Oh, I see, yes. And I remember when it came up on the state level, too, because it had, some cities were dragging it out so long and not processing. It was costing those companies money, so they're like, y'all got to get on the ball and either say yes or no. Okay.
What's the difference in the federal ordinance and ours?
Maybe fifty to ten days?
Thirty-five days right now.
Just the day limit?
Just the day limit, as far as I know. The time limit that you have to approve. And, uh, planning commission did recommend approval of this.
Do we have anybody, is there anybody that's wants to argue about upping that cost? Obviously, it's going to cost them more money.
I haven't heard anything about, um, well, the cost was just raised today. Um, that was not raised at the planning commission meeting, because fees aren't usually considered by planning commission. We have not had a cellphone tower application since I've been here in five years.
Janet, can, can we bring this, can we bring this back up for Tuesday night?
Yes.
As well as putting, and putting the new, new five hundred dollar fee in for this article number six as well?
Okay.
Rather than, rather than voting on it today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Some of that's new information.
We need to have the thing completed before we vote on it.
Yeah.
Has it been advertised?
It was advertised. Not the fee, but the actual change of the ordinance.
Would it be appropriate to advertise the fee also?
I don't, I don't think we have, I mean, I think our fees are based just on a, whatever the existing fee schedule is, uh, so I don't think we have to advertise a fee change.
Okay.
The next item that I have is, um, ORD dash eleven dash oh-six dash CCO. This is readoption of the trespass ordinance from twenty-eleven. Um, this is, was omitted from the ordinances that we submitted to municode. So this is pretty much administrative, just to add this back. And you all can bet on this today.
That's General Housekeeping, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes.
I move to approve.
Second.
Of ordinance.
All those in favor? I think this next one's a no-brainer, but number four?
Yeah, we can get rid of no-brainers.
Number five.
Oh.
The smoke-free air ordinance amendment. You all had wanted, I guess, to see the state ordinance, to see how our, um, smoke-free air ordinance of twenty-twelve differs from what the state has, has passed. So I've included a copy of our ordinance, as well as the state ordinance.
You know, I read through all, all this. What's the state, what are they doing with e-cigarettes?
They do not-
Right offhand, I didn't recall seeing it.
Yeah, they, um, do allow for retail tobacco stores to, um, I guess, sell the e-cigarettes. But they don't really address e-cigarettes in the length that we do in our ordinance.
Ours was very lengthy. Well, I'm glad we're doing something about it, because ours was just over-the-top restrictive, and really, I don't smoke, I don't like smoking. But we weren't enforcing half the stuff in it, because it was so demanding as to what it required in almost every business in the city. There's only, I think I only had one que- I put a question by one part on page, I don't see a page number.
About ours or state?
On the state.
Ours. Because we're looking to adopt the state in place of ours, correct?
Give us a section.
Chapter twelve A, is that right? If you look at the state law, one, two, three, four, that's four, and go to page five. Very top, it doesn't say page five, but it's a fifth page back.
The state or, or the city? You said state.
State, yeah, because that's the one we're looking to adopt. I've, we, we kind of hashed over the city one last meeting. I just put a little question mark here where it talks about, you know, obviously, there's certain areas, like private functions and areas where it's allowed. And just that it says eighteen and under prohibited from attending or working, and that particular thing. I don't know if that'll be a problem in some areas, if they're eighteen and they're adult. Is it because twenty plus?
Well, it's under the age of eighteen, so it's not eighteen and over. It's under the age of eighteen, so you're a minor.
You're right, you're right. Yes, okay.
I got a question for Mr. Macklin. On the state law, and we also have it in our, our law as well, uh, our, our, our ordinance. Defining restaurants, obviously, smoking is prohibited in restaurants. And it said restaurant means eating establishment, including not, not limited to coffee shops, cafeteria, sandwich stands, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. What, what constitutes a restaurant from, uh, uh, when, I know we don't have bars, but what constitutes a restaurant from a place that serves alcohol, or a place that serves alcohol that happens to have a restaurant? You have to have fifty percent, you have to serve fifty percent food. Does that make you a restaurant, or does that make you a bar?
If, if, the answer to that is we don't have bars in Villarica.
I got you.
There we go.
I, I, I got you.
Is that right, Verlin?
But to those people where they're eating a hamburger and can buy a beer.
Right.
Is that a restaurant, or is it a beer parlor?
That is a restaurant, unless, unless it is a wine and craft beer boutique. That is the only other category that we have besides a restaurant.
So-
We didn't used to have those either, but we have those now, too.
So the eating establishments, obviously, that we have here, that serve fifty percent food, is their smoking going to be prohibited?
Yes. Well, we, we don't have smoking in restaurants in Villarica.
Exactly. If, if the council is so inclined, staff can go ahead and, and work with GMA, and we can do an audit, and then we can come back and tell you if we have any bars in the city.
By ordinance, we don't have bars in city.
You, you think we have some bars?
Even though we do allow signs that says Bar and Grill.
Chief, chief, we don't have any bars in our city, do we?
Just have some people have-
There, there really isn't any reason to bypass it. I mean, we all sitting here, and we all know it. So, I mean, if it's-
I've said that in a previous meeting.
If it's a spade, it-
I'll gladly go in.
If it's a harp, it's a diamond, whatever it is. But I'm just saying, if we're going to adopt, if you're going to adopt the state ordinance, and the state ordinance sits right here and prohibits smoking in a, in a restaurant, and if we are going to define the three restaurants in Villarica right now that serve alcohol, it seems to me that we're asking them to prohibit smoking, not after eight o'clock, or nine o'clock, or ten o'clock.
One thing about bars, are people under eighteen allowed in, are not bars, are things that aren't bars?
In our-
Depends on whether or not you smoke or not.
Well, because, and, and I'm sorry, we're having to be, but you know what? It's just ridiculous to have some of this on the books when we don't enforce most of it. But here, exemption for smoking prohibitions, under Title thirty-one, Health Chapter twelve A. Okay, these are the exempted areas. All bars and restaurants to which access is denied to any person under eighteen, and that do not employ any individual under eighteen. So does Sticks and Cinema Tavern, can you go in there if you're underage?
As far as I know, they allow people under eighteen to be in there.
So they would either have to stop smoking-
They're restaurants.
Or not allow-
Up, up until a certain time. I think it's, I don't know, eight o'clock or nine o'clock, or, there's a time that if you're under eighteen, supposedly you have to leave, because that's when, I, I understand that they allow smoking. And that's, that's nowhere-
The first thing I did as a city manager was go to every single one of these eating establishments, like I made my rounds. And then I, I couldn't take it anymore. The smoke was killing me after the third one. That is a true honest, I have not been in the Cinema Tavern. I just gave up. Because they're not restaurants, okay? You, you can call a duck, a duck, if it quacks, but they're not. So, so that's why I'm saying is, if you really want to address this, we'll go in and, and, and do the normal audit. We'll contract with GMA. They'll come in, they'll do the food liquor audit, they'll look at the reports, they'll come back, and they'll tell us who's a restaurant, who's a bar. These folks are, are literally skirting the fine line of the law, and filling out a piece of paper, and hand it in, saying, we're a restaurant, and they do it. But every single one of them, I can go in there with a meter and tell you how much smoke's in there. It's god-awful.
But that's it. They're doing it, they're doing it, but we have allowed it. We have helped it, in a sense. So what consensus are we going to come to, so we can put this thing to rest? Because personally, I don't think we have any business telling those private businesses how they're supposed to run their business.
Well-
If state law, if state law does that, it's not necessarily just us.
And, and state law is telling us, though, Mr. Best, right here, that the smoking is prohibited.
Okay, then if it's out of our hands, and it's state law, then the only way they're going to be, and we're going to have to enforce this, the only way that they can continue having smoking is they need to be eighteen and above, according to state law, correct? There's either no smoking, or, oh.
Right now, our ordinance is more restrictive than the state law.
Yes.
You cannot, whether you're, if, even if everybody's over eighteen, under our existing ordinance, there's not supposed to be any smoking.
Yeah, but we're talking about adopting the state.
If we change it to the state law, then yes, you could permit it, if you, as a restaurant, declare, everybody that's in this building has to be at least eighteen years old.
But we don't have an alcohol license that allows people to sell alcohol without meeting the food requirement.
We have no bars.
By definition, we have none. We may have some in practice, but by, by law, we have no bars, because they don't exist.
So, so I'll just ask again, but now I'll be a little more direct. Counsel, would you like staff to go in and audit, so we can determine, are they restaurants, or are they bars? And then I bring you back some information, you can make some determinations on, do you have restaurants, or do you have bars?
On, on Verlin's behalf, I'd say, yeah. We probably need to do that.
Do I really have to ask Ms. really what her vote is?
That would take away what he's been saying for the last, so, we don't have any bars in Villarica.
We're either going to have them or we're not, and we might as well admit what it really is.
Yeah, if we got law-
Decide what you all want.
We got law that says we're not supposed to have them, we ought to enforce-
I mean, it's a can of worms, and everybody up here knows it. Everybody up here knows it, but I'm just saying, if we have an ordinance, abide by the ordinance. If you not, don't have.
Right, otherwise, we sit here and pretend something that's not true, so.
And you get all the problems that come with it. So, do you want, I, I, I've, I've heard one, and then I've heard one on behalf of another. So I don't know if that's a half or not, but, but let me know what the will of the council is, and, and I'll, I'll gladly move forward.
I'd like to know.
If we're going to- If all of this can do it.
If we're going- If we're going to enforce-
We need to know which ones are breaking the law if we're going to enforce it.
If we're going to enforce what's supposed to be in writing, then I say yes, but if we're not, why waste the time?
Well, at, at least by doing this, though, Verlin, if we come back and make the decision on-
We're going to have bars, or not going to have bars.
Yeah, that's it.
Let's just get it done with, then we won't have to come back and keep doing this.
This is an easy fix for a definition.
Yeah, it would, it would help us enforce it if we find out, then we can enforce those bars that we're not supposed to have.
So do it.
All right, staff has heard you. Let's, uh-
So take this item off the agenda for Tuesday?
Do we have to add special mask into the budget, so y'all can have a contraption? I would not want that job.
Well, we got number five on Tuesday, right?
I would say table five until a date certain. That's got to be the will of the council.
Well, we can put it for Tuesday and table it then.
Yeah, I mean, you table it now. I mean, reality is, it's going to take me about sixty, ninety days to get the audit done.
You make a motion to table it.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't need to bring it up Tuesday.
Move to table it.
All those in favor?
Thank you, counsel.
You're welcome.
Number six.
The next item that I have for you is the film production ordinance. I brought this to you last month. We did redo this, taking out the stipulation for student projects to have to get the film production permit. The rest of the ordinance is the same as it was.
That was the only, that was the only stipulation in that last one, was it? What was about the, just students coming out?
It was the student and one other thing. I had, uh, because of the fact that it requires, um, sixty, sixty days? Uh, has to be filed sixty days prior to the date. The only other thing I had brought up is, there are some things that don't require any services of the city, wouldn't require police officers, but if some sort of tragedy happened, and people decided to have a prayer vigil around the flag, I just want to make sure they don't have to show up at City Hall sixty days in advance for something that happened that week, so that they can have a prayer vigil. And it, but I didn't see any flexibility in there, David, where it gave you the authority to may, to be flexible on that.
What's that, what's that got to do with film production?
I think the sixty day was on the special events permit.
Yes.
Yeah, so we're on the film one.
I apologize. I apologize.
I thought you might have jumped ahead by one.
I did. Sorry about that.
Got any problem with the film?
No, no, they took out the student, if students want to film, they don't have to have a permit. That's-
I move to approve this.
Oh, she did approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Okay, and the next item that I have is the special event permit.
So I'll just, I won't repeat that again. There you go.
As stated.
Little too much coffee. Or not enough.
Okay, so let's address the sixty day issue. What's the thought on the sixty days? Um, because I know you worked with, um, Parks Recreation on this and a couple others, and, and so what's, what, what was the staff thought on the sixty days?
Was it an emergency?
My, yeah, my thought was that it take, you know, we're going to have to assess how much it's going to cost for city staff, and, um, I mean, maybe sixty's a little much, but-
Well, I mean, the reality is, I mean, so, so the council knows, um, staff did put in the appeal section, so anything can get appealed to the city manager if you adopt the ordinance as is. So, you know, to, to Councilman Best comment, you know, what's an emergency, a special permit? You know, the reality is, if something happens, and, and they have a vigil, and they want to do a permit, I can't hold them off for sixty days, nor would I, you know?
I just didn't see that flexibility in the ordinance, and if it was that, or-
It's, it's under the appeal section.
God forbid one of our soldiers gets killed, and somebody wants to have a prayer vigil or something like that. I just can't see them coming down to city to get a permit, because it requires no city services. Whereas a lot of these things, shutting down roads, and if it does require one, it shouldn't cost anything, and it's got to just allow the flexibility to go faster than sixty days. So if there's a way to do that, I'm happy with it. I just want to make sure that somebody in those circumstances can come down and say, hey, we want to have a prayer vigil, we want to pray around the flag, and it's not a whole bunch of bureaucratic mess to do something as simple as that.
They can get by the day period by doing it on- They can get by the day period by doing an appeal.
Well, we'll have to tweak this, um, let's see, because quite frankly, it goes to the city manager, the city manager then can make a determination. If they don't like the determination by the city manager, they then can file an appeal and come to the council. By then, you're already at sixty days, but there may be another reason why they did the appeal. I mean, they could have been denied, you know, for some reason, but you're absolutely right. I mean, there is a right, a constitutional right and First Amendment right to, you know, assemble. The permit process is to make sure, from a public safety standpoint, you know, that, you know, you know who's on your right of way, what they're doing, how they're doing it, and, I mean, but your other concern was the fees.
So, what's the short answer? If one of our officers got shot somewhere and we decided to have a prayer vigil, how the heck do we do something like that without having to have a permit or have all this-
Just have the city call for the prayer vigil?
Yeah, I would think that, I don't know that we can plan for every possibility in all the examples that you used there, I think it would just happen. I think that the city manager, all of the council would say, "Just do it."
Well, I would hope so.
I go back and ask the question again, what's an emergency? And who can declare the emergency? And if that falls under the definition of an emergency, then it seems though the city manager, the mayor and/or council can declare that. So, if that's all the things that y'all have talked about, the city manager could declare that an emergency to be able to do that, at a moment's notice, actually, if that's available.
And if, Mr. Best, if, touching on this, and I hear you, totally agree with you, but just say we have a boisterous group, just, and no names, nothing, but if we have a group that doesn't express Villa Rica or our best interest, and they want to march out here, whatever, then with what you're saying, if it goes back to the city manager and the city manager disallows it, then it comes back in then before the council, obviously it would have lost its luster. So, Leslie, I kind of see at least a, I kind of see at least a timeframe of something happening unless Mr. Miller approves it as an emergency. And I thought we'd already sort of kind of set that up to where we knew we were going to allow the city manager to do certain things without having to call us in on a special session on every time he needed to make a decision. I thought we had already discussed that.
And it's built into this thing that they can appeal to the council if they don't like the answer from the city manager.
Are we, are we at risk for violating First Amendment rights of people on a pub, to assemble publicly? I'm not talking about an event where they shut down, you know, this is very clear, you need something like this when you're going to have to shut down streets for a parade or some kind of special-
And that's the purpose of having that ordinance, is so that it is a neutral content ordinance, that everybody would apply with the same thing, but there will be things that happen in life that is not going to be covered by the ordinance, and we'll just have to deal with those.
Can we give the city, could we give the city manager just the flexibility to say, "That's fine, you know, have your prayer around the flag"?
I think he already has that.
Yeah, I think the appeals part.
It didn't seem clear on here.
I mean, administratively, administratively, your city manager already has car park lodge power. I mean, but I can assure you, if there's a group that gets denied that thinks they have a First Amendment right, you'd best hopefully hear from your city manager well before you read it in the paper, see it on Channel Five or Two or Eleven, because that's going to, it's not going to wait thirty days or sixty days, I can pretty much assure you. And that's why you have a city attorney, because you have common sense, the city manager usually calls and says, "Okay, this is what I got, and I think I might get sued on this one, what's your opinion?" So, that's why it makes a good team. But your city manager, you know, you can say, "Mr. Miller," but whoever physically, that institution, that position, already has that authority. It just gives you the appeal step to go to the council.
Okay, that's fine, that was not clear to me in what I read, but that's fine.
And you're right, it's not in the ordinance, but I equate it to-
Common sense.
It's like the police officer out on the street that stops somebody for speeding. It's on the books that they're speeding, but he doesn't have to write out a speeding ticket to them.
Okay.
Janet, you even spoke a while ago that maybe sixty was, sixty days was in excess. Do you want to change that to thirty, or do you want to leave it at sixty before we-
Or forty-five, or?
Forty-five, whatever, I mean, it's your, it's our ordinance, but you're presenting it.
Well, I put the sixty in there to allow for, you know, from the time of application until we, you know, send it out to the different departments to get costs back, you know, staffing needs, and then get back to the applicant. I would like to see us have sixty days, if you all think that's too much.
Okay, and if it's a problem, we could always change it in the future.
Sixty days is appropriate, because you need to plan for the worst case. I mean, if they want to come and have Woodstock here in Villa Rica-
We won't need sixty days.
We need six years.
We need sixty days to plan for a big event.
The ordinance as it's written, do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Ms. Shirley, second.
The next item, the food truck permit ordinance, I should have asked for an agenda amendment on this, because I do not have it ready, I apologize.
Eight is a hold?
Yeah.
Tuesday. Table.
I would say table for a month. I think you all need to read that one.
I hear a motion to table?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
And then number nine, we've already heard. Number ten is the parcel donation to MMB Construction. That was the land on Pine Drive to open it up to Kandler. Staff did hand deliver letters to the homeowners that have property that touches Pine Drive. And we did tell them that you would all be voting on this on Tuesday, so I'd rather you not vote on that tonight.
Are we going to put this on Tuesday, right? Number ten.
Any feedback, any negatives?
We have not heard from any of those homeowners.
Have we talked to any, especially the last one on, that the road runs into?
We haven't, we left a letter with them, but we have not-
That was the original problem, is that last house, but the lady that used to live there is not there anymore, so. I've talked to some of the people who live on the street, and they're all for it.
What's staff's input? What's staff's input on this road?
I'm for opening it up, just as a planner, you like to see that connectivity all the time.
It's just a dead end road that runs into the back of somebody's property, you've got to get those people to let you go through.
Right, well, I'd been told it would take, it would help with Kandler, too, where everybody, that, what, is like a one-way, the cemetery?
Cemetery road is not too good, so it would become a normal road that you could use.
Tight spots over there, but, in fact, we rode that recently.
Number eleven.
Number eleven, well, I would also ask that y'all table this. We did talk with the city attorney about this, and he raised some questions having to do with public use of a parklet, and when we took those back to the property owners, they wanted to kind of think about this a little bit longer, so I asked for you to table this.
I'll table it.
Say again, when you took it back to the property owners?
They, they wanted to think about it a little bit more, based on some comments by Mr. Mecklen, having to do with public access to the parklet, and whether somebody, say, riding a bike along the sidewalk, could stop and just park and sit in front of the restaurant.
Move to table indefinitely till they bring it back.
Who has the insurance liability on these parklets, David?
Our agreement would require that they, they have insurance coverage. We also would have it on a public sidewalk, but Janet was right, the question was, do they want to maintain, maintain this area as really a private part of their restaurant, which is a problem if it's a public sidewalk.
I move to table.
Second.
You seconded it?
I seconded. All those in favor? I did.
It's hard keeping up with your job.
Who would imagine?
Thank you, Janet.
Janet, high show's over.
Bless her heart. Pete?
Pete has a short show.
You have two comments.
No, city manager's first.
I'm going to go first with the community development block grant agreement.
I'm sorry.
As previously brought to council, we were going to aggressively pursue when the next round of funding opened. We have had a kickoff meeting with Allen Smith Consulting. They were also the grant writers on the last CDBG, so staff has met with them, and we have a proposal for a grant writing for the fiscal year 2017 CDBG. So, this is a, an agreement that would have to be approved by council before we could entertain and go down the path of seeking that grant. The reason it needs council approval is because, of course, it's going to cost money to have the grant, but certainly there's always matching funds, so you'll be able to recoup funds that the city puts towards this, and there's always matching funds towards the CDBG anyway, which, which helps you with your point. So, this is a recommendation that we utilize Allen Smith Consulting for our CDBG grant.
Nine thousand dollars?
Nine thousand?
Yes, nine thousand.
But it's, what's the five, what's the first five thousand?
That's just one on above it, the first one. Grant writing services was five thousand.
You're seeing five thousand, but I thought ninety dollars an hour for additional services as performed. The total, you have other fees for services, so there's the project readiness assistance, and then you have the grant writing. The grant writing itself is five thousand, and then the readiness assistance is four, so it's a combination of nine thousand. Yes, sir.
There is an apartment on fire, but I believe I got it, one apartment plus the middle. So, I believe I got it.
Thank you, sir. You all heard so many sirens, you probably needed to know what, what was on fire.
An apartment, where is it at?
Wilson Mill.
Behind Donridge Four.
Isn't that your district, Shirley? Yeah?
Question.
Yes.
I thought you said this was for 2017?
The 2017 cycle, FY 2017 cycle, the government operates on a different fiscal year than we do.
It says 2016 all throughout here. As far as instance, Allen Smith Consulting wishes to provide the grant administration services for the client's FY 2016 CDBG grant if funded.
Says that on the total, too.
Yet, top of the page, it says 2017.
Yeah, it's just a, you know, search and replace, we can just fix that.
Which one is it?
It's 2017, definitely 2017. Yeah, 2016 is left in the station. In fact, they just recently awarded those, so.
Has Allen Smith done this, these grant rights for us before?
Yeah, they're, they're a very reputable firm.
They're the ones we use.
Good, and they're the best deal we can get? I don't see the best deal price for those, because you could get somebody that wasn't good.
Best deal, I'll tell you that this particular company watchdogs it, handholds, does all the paperwork, handles everything seamlessly, and then goes through the whole DCA audit process. They're one of the most reputable firms, so, if you're asking if I bid it out, no.
We've already bid it out.
It's a professional service anyway, though, correct? So, the first fee that we're looking at is five thousand, second fee is nine thousand.
Four thousand.
Four thousand.
Nine thousand total.
Total, total of nine grand, and then, and then six percent of the total grant fund that we get.
Shall we pay this out in Tucson?
As they bill, as they incur.
Most, most out-of-pocket, out-of-pocket money without receiving anything, that's nine thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Move to accept.
Second, all those in favor?
All right, second one, Mr.'s upon us. Ankle deep in.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem and Council, I'd like to recommend a request for your approval of purchase of a flow cam analyzer at the cost of thirty-eight thousand dollars, and they are sole source. I'd be glad to take any questions on that.
Is this a replacement item, or is this something?
This is a brand-new item.
Why don't we need it?
We need it, I think it'd be cost-effective for us to purchase one. The brief description there in the sentence, it's a little bit more than just a particle counter. It's also mated with a very sophisticated camera with a fast shutter lens and a microscopic lens. It allows us to quantify and quantify algae counts in real time. We are currently sending, collecting samples and sending them to Louisiana for analysis. Takes a good bit of time to package it, you know, send it off in the mail, could be a couple of days. We try to expedite it when we can, but if you overnight it, of course, you're incurring more costs. Just a point of reference, if, right now, we've got the cost down to roughly a hundred and twenty-five dollars per sample that we collect and send. If we're doing six samples per week at fifty-two weeks, that's a total of thirty-nine thousand dollars. I think this instrument, we pay for itself, at least in twelve months, it may even do it in six months for us.
Move to accept.
That's the commercial-
This is for the water system.
I have it. I have a second. All those in favor?
It was, I want to, it's for the water system, that's-
Yeah, it's the water.
Okay.
Thank you.
That was, that wasn't, that was unbudgeted.
This is going to help with the summer algae bloom, too, right?
They actually have, from the department, now that Pete's here, they've been moving money around as we need to with different repairs. They did have a line item for equipment in there, so I think they'll be fine.
So, they're not over budgeted?
Yeah, yeah, since there's some stuff we haven't done yet. Again, a lot of that budget was based on the previous Public Works Director and Guidance, and then, of course, now Pete's on staff, so, so he's looking at it with a total different microscope.
Can, can Pete, or you, in that particular case, these, these non-budgeted items that we had, like that one right there, for the next council meeting, could you, could y'all put them together, Pete, and at least see where your transfers went, if you're taking them from one ledger fund over to another one? If you had money for equipment, go ahead and at least insert this, this item.
Under your, under your budget ordinance, they're allowed to move within their department all day long, with the CFO's authority.
Okay.
So, so, for instance, there are line items in there for, for instance, it'll just say, "Equipment repairs." So, yes, this one wasn't per se budgeted, meaning like, when we did the budget, did we know we would buy this? No. When they estimated their budget based on past equipment repairs, that's, that's where we did the five-year trend. So, so at this point, he's fine. As we get later in the year, if we suspect there's an issue or we get tight, then we'll bring and say, "Okay, here are some unbudgeted things that were unforeseen." For instance, you know, the memo I sent you last night, that's unforeseen, but there's money in that account to cover it. So, you're, so you're good at this point.
Okay.
Move on to D, Ms. Coleman.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Pro Tem and Council. The first item that's before you, this is a request approval of the Transportation Enhancement Grant, or the T Grant Agreement with, which will be the city and the Georgia Department of Transportation. This is for the Fullerville Trailhead Project. So, this item has already been, it's budgeted in capital and was approved with the approval of the budget. An approval of this will allow us to begin moving forward. It's really the last phase before the G-Dot is required, before we're able to put this out on the street for bidding.
Let's give her the-
Any questions on this?
Move to approve this item.
We've already approved it.
We've approved it a number of times over the years, but we need a, we need a formal approval for the mayor, pro tem, to sign off on the contract.
I still move to approve.
All those in favor?
Am I supposed to have this in my book?
The big, big, big one? We'd sent a message that it was so thick that we entertained everyone to come down to City Hall to review it.
Yes, thank you.
And I know Mike Williamson picked up a copy.
I picked up a copy.
I did.
Oh, you did, too? Yeah, it was, um, pretty thick. Moo, moo, moo. And we're not talking about the petting zoo.
Oh, okay, you gentlemen want to come forward? This is a request from the Omega Psi Phi fraternity chapter, the, excuse me, the Mu Mu chapter- Mu chapter. They're requesting on August thirteenth to hold a music festival at the Mill, but the request that they're also asking for is the allowance of beer and wine in partnership with a local caterer for their event. And the applicants are here, so I'll allow them to provide more explanation of what they're looking for.
Please state your name for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmen. I'm Dave Beasley. I'm a retired, and ladies and gentlemen, I'm a retired marine officer and educator of Douglas County School System and current member of the Mu Mu chapter of Omega Psi Phi fraternity. We chartered this chapter on the west side to serve the counties of Douglas County and Paulding County. I'm also the president of our 501(c)(3) sponsorship foundation called the Steppenstone Foundation. And this foundation is, was founded to serve the people and children primarily, and students of Douglas County and Paulding Counties. Our primary mission is one of our four cardinal principles, that of scholarship. And we have given over, since we chartered in 2011, we've given over twelve thousand dollars in scholarship. With this current year, we've made it up to five thousand dollars in scholarship. We have solicited students from the Douglas County and Paulding Counties to apply for our scholarship. And I have my fraternity brothers here with me who would like to address you about our Tri-Mu Music Festival in August.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem, Council. My name is Marcus Harley. I am the actual scholarship chairman for the Mu Mu Mu, there are three Mews in it, not two. The purpose of the music fest is a one-day music event where we just provide fun, fellowship in the means of raising money for our scholarship fund for stepping stones. As the scholarship chairman, as Brother Beasley alluded to, in our existence, we have been able to distribute an award over twelve thousand dollars in scholarship funds. And in the previous years, we've been in Douglas County, but we've grown to capacity and we're looking for a new home. So as a matter of fact, I was looking for, when I was looking for a venue, I was actually headed to Chattanooga for another jazz festival when the Mill popped up on my Facebook page. I said, well, let me go check it out. So after coming back, I drove and I fell in love with it the first time I saw it. It was perfect because what we're looking to do is provide an intimate setting for our patrons. We noticed that the capacity was twelve hundred. Traditionally, we've sold around five hundred tickets, so we're looking to stay within that range. As far as the sale of alcohol, it was previously alluded to, beer and wine in conjunction with the Olive Tree Restaurant. We've been, been talking to him. In our chapter, we have several law enforcement officers, one of whom has spoken with local law enforcement within the county as far as how to provide a structure plan in place so that we can make sure that all sales are contained within the venue site.
Are you all, is your, is your fraternity, is it represented at the University of West Georgia? Do you all have a chapter there?
Yes, sir, we do have a undergraduate chapter there. But we are a graduate chapter, a graduate chapter of the same degree.
Gates open at, you're setting up from twelve to four, gates open at four, so it's a, it's a four-hour event.
Yes, sir.
Pretty much. But only music, only music's going to be three hours?
The music will be from four, four to nine. What we're looking to have is a combination of a DJ and live music acts.
In, in reading, in, in reading this a little earlier, you're, the only point of entrance and exit is a, is a rope of some sort, is that correct?
No, sir, we're going to use the barricades, the newly purchased barricades.
Okay.
Parade barricades as a means of enclosure.
The only other thing I saw, too, is just that you all wanted some additional time. It looked like an hour or two for cleanup, that sort of thing?
Yeah, just to make sure that we left the park venue in the shape that we found it.
Okay, thank you.
Good faith.
And I think, and I think it's everyone's concern that any time that we have an event at the Mill or the V-Plex or whatever, obviously, the younger the crowd, the more chances that there are, that there are for, you know, disruption, whatever, not to, not to say that there wouldn't be from a bunch of senior centers that get out there and have too much beer and wine, but there certainly could be. Do you feel that four to five police officers, I think was what I read, is that, is that ample, Chief Mansour? You feel that?
If we're going to wear around five hundred, yeah, we should be okay.
What, what, when does that number, when do you, what if a thousand people show up?
Well, we also have in our logistical plan that brothers that are going to be at the event would also be there to monitor our consumption mainly. But traditionally, our patrons, we've not had any issues with, you know, public drunkenness or anything of that nature because we are a more mature crowd. And like you said, you, you do have that possibility, but traditionally, we haven't, we haven't faced that issue. Logistically, we do have people in place to help monitor.
I hear you saying you're selling five hundred tickets, is that what you're saying?
Sir?
I thought I heard you say you, you were selling five hundred tickets.
We're, we're looking to sell five hundred tickets, yes, sir.
Okay. Is that the maximum that you're going to print, five hundred?
Yeah, we're going to print five hundred, but we will also allow walk-up sales because we know that not everybody is on social media. Some people do hear word of mouth, and for some of our patrons, you know, they don't like PayPal, you know, modern, you know, modern payment outlets like that, so.
One, one correction, we're printing four hundred tickets and allowing others to own that.
Okay. To revert back to what Ms. McPherson said, fill us in on the optional one or two hours. Is there a fee for that, Mr. Malone, or have you agreed upon that, or are we doing that gratis?
For cleaning?
Well, it's for cleanup, it's not, it's not for their activity.
They're wanting, okay, so they're wanting an additional hour.
They're saying it's going to take an hour and a half to clean it.
Just for cleanup, not for the entertainment.
All we have to do is come by and look at it later.
Yes, sir, the music starts at nine.
So you're wanting until cleanup and breakdown, you're wanting?
That's just a range because our plan, again, is to have someone there during the whole time monitoring trash, monitoring the restrooms.
So you're still thinking your cleanup and breakdown finishes at ten-thirty?
I just wanted to give a good-sized range.
Give them some flexibility.
Okay.
Our standard agreement for all of these events have those type of terms in them that we have everybody to sign, whether it be the Lions Club or the Arts Festival. I mean, all these terms are ones that are included in our standard agreement for the most part.
This isn't any different than anything that we're doing.
I don't see any difference between any of them that we've had.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
If you'll go to discussion first, please.
All right. Discussion.
Yeah, if you're, all right. The one thing that I heard was use of the city's barricades, which, which, of course, the city owns and purchased. So how are we going to address that?
So, well, there were two things. Well, we, I did let them know that they were going to have to certainly create a barrier. I gave them the option. I said, certainly the barriers are there. If they wanted to find a cheaper option in terms of how they would fence the area off, that, they certainly said that they were going to look and explore what all those options were. But they do know that it is required if they're going to sell alcohol of any kind.
But you're saying they're looking to rent our barricades, is that what you're saying?
Right, they, they said that was an option on the table. But again, I said, if you find a cheaper alternative to barricade or fence off the area, then they're certainly welcome to do so.
I just want to be specific that it's, it's, you know, certainly with, with all of our staff, our law enforcement things, I was fine with the barricade type that we use for the jazz festival. I want, you know, when we did the other outside event, you know, I want more stringent fencing there, and I think our officers would also, because our staff's not running the whole event, we haven't done all the logistics. The other thing is, before council votes, I would really encourage you, unless, unless you've done this, Vicki, I'd encourage you to delay the vote until Tuesday, give us a chance to have staff reach out to these other venues that they've worked with, make sure that, you know, they haven't had any issues, problems, because, you know, I was on vacation last week, this, this, I haven't had a chance to call any of these, reach out to them, and I think appropriately, we should do that.
I don't see a reason we can't wait to Tuesday, do you, Leslie?
Well, we had, we, we had a vote, we had a, we had a minimum to approve, we had a second.
I didn't realize that staff had not had the time to follow up on this.
Well, that's why I'm asking, I mean, have you contacted each of these venues and?
I haven't followed up with all of these venues at this point, but I will tell you that they, they know that the vote is supposed to be on Tuesday, so I don't think that's an issue.
Okay, I'll withdraw in a second.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Council.
I move to put this thing on Tuesday.
I hear a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
I really don't see a problem, but I agree with.
I don't, I don't either, but I hear what, I'm good with, I hear what David said.
Yeah, I agree with it.
It's a good policy.
It is, sure is.
No problem, we just got to make our city manager happy.
What, what are we doing, also, as far as insurance policy?
Standard in?
Good afternoon, I'm George Fishburne, I'm keeper of records and seal for the chapter, and so that's pretty much my job. What happens is, once we've effect a contract with you folks, we send all of that to our headquarters, they issue me an insurance certificate, and then I give it to you for your records.
And the agreement between the Olive Tree stands, correct, David? That's just their?
Yeah, I mean, if they're going to sell alcohol, they have to provide insurance as a purveyor of alcohol in the city.
Was there, is there a letter from the Olive Tree stating that they are going to be the purveyor of the alcohol?
We've had conversations with him, and he's been out of the country.
Okay.
So, so we hope to facilitate that soon.
I'd like.
But he's already agreed to do it.
Okay. I mean, I'd like to at least have that for our record Tuesday, if we can just have that from, from Mike.
Because for us, it wouldn't be an agreement between us and the city, it would be them, so our agreement really wouldn't hold, but we, we would need to basically hammer out an agreement or the council on Tuesday if you're, you know, once we do our due diligence, if you're comfortable moving forward. There are certain stipulations that I want to make sure that are addressed, and certainly I want to chat with our chief so that, you know, because, because we are going in uncharted territory here, so I just want to be comfortable because my next one's on the line.
So we'll see you Tuesday. We'll see you Tuesday.
Vicki, do you have their contact information?
I do have their contact information.
Okay.
And, yeah, I have Mike at.
At Talus.
At Talus, excuse me, he did follow up with me about his meeting with them as well, so just FYI. I didn't know if you had called number three. Okay, I have number three. This is requesting the bid approval for the cheerleader uniforms, excuse me. We put out the request in March, we ended up with two respondents. However, one of those respondents sent back incomplete information. We're recommending team leader, and that's a hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-nine cents per set.
Just the same group you went with last year?
Yes.
And they had an incomplete bid, number two did, and they still were charging a hundred and thirty-five dollars?
When we went, went back to total up everything, there's one piece of information that they left out, but based on everything that they pulled together so far, it was coming to a hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-five cents per uniform.
Okay, I move to approve this.
Second.
All those in favor? We'll move on to the governing body. E1 is the Tourism Board Audit, and.
It's got your name on it.
I'm just, I'm just going to read from the, the ordinance on the original agreement. And it was the fifth day of April 2010 by the Mayor and Council of City of Velarica here, referred to as the city and the Velarica Board of Tourism, here and after referred to as the board. Article number seven on it called for, "Any, any funds provided to the board by the city shall be subject to audit in accordance with all provisions of Georgia law." And David, we've asked that of you, have you, have you been able to begin an audit of?
I know that this came up at a previous meeting, and it was my understanding that the city attorney, the responsibility of this, not, not my office.
Yeah, I called and made the Board of Tourism aware of that, and I, it was represented to me that the audit would be completed before the end of June and submitted to the city. So I have no reason to believe that it's not coming in. I intend to hold the Board of Tourism's feet to the fire on that.
So we should be able to see it.
You talking about the ex-Board of Tourism?
Mm-hmm.
The, the. Prior Board of Tourism.
Well, it's still the Board of, it's still the Board of Tourism, but.
It's not the fellow.
It's not the one that you currently contracted with.
We had a contract with.
This agreement that you're reading from, is that the same agreement you give back to the city? I think you drew it up, didn't you, David?
I, I drew up a contract between the city and the Board of Tourism. The one that I have seen signed is not the one that I drew up.
That's, okay, that may be something we'll look into as well.
So this is not, this is not yours?
It is not the draft that I originally prepared and forwarded to the city.
Move on to E2, Contract for Tourism Development Services. David?
All right, this is a.
I don't have any, I got my packet, do you?
This, you don't have one?
Yeah.
Uh-oh.
I got one.
Did we miss one? I'll give you mine. This is indeed a document drawn up by our city attorney.
You know what, I have two.
Oh, there you go. Hopefully he concurs that he.
Whose do I have?
That's still yours.
I think about a month ago, I circulated this via email to the council, soliciting any feedback. The Downtown Development Authority had authorized Jody Mount to be their negotiating liaison on their side. This document has gone back and forth. No, let me take that back. You didn't draft this. I think they drafted it based on, one, they had previously seen with the previous group.
Right.
And you reviewed it, as I recall, and I think tweaked a couple of things, yes or no?
A few things, but I'm okay with this draft.
Okay. So, so this is the proposed agreement coming from the DDA through Jody Mount. I asked the council for any feedback. I did receive one feedback from one council member. It has to do with section number three, the percentages. The percentages in this document propose City of Velarica forty percent, Downtown Development Authority sixty percent. The particular council member that gave me feedback said that they would like it to revert back to what state law says, and that is that the city should get sixty percent and the Downtown Development Authority in the agreement should get forty percent. So it's, it's a draft contract for services before you for consideration, change, and potentially adoption.
I agree with sixty, forty. Needs to be changed.
And when it reverts.
Ask for sixty, forty.
You, you can start there as a minimum, but you can give away as much as you want. That, and at one point, there was an agreement, I will say that I know under the current structure that this council approved, you are giving staff services to the DDA, so there's expense, and theoretically, you know, that, that can be attached to your revenue. All money up to this point has been held in escrow, none has been spent. All money's collected would have to be expended by the end of the year, and then we would have to submit paperwork to the state.
Also, I think you need to take Collins' name off of here.
Who's name?
Jay Collins.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's understood, yes, sir.
Which Danny reverts back to, if you leave it, and I understand, and I'm, I'm okay with it either way, but if you leave it forty, sixty, as it was before, if they, if they spend the. the money, and you like what they do, you wouldn't have to go back in and give them more to do it, and if they haven't spent the money, at the end of the 12-month period, you get it back, that money then would go in the general fund, is that correct, David?
Does it still have to be for tourism?
It would still be tagged, you'd still have to tag it for, you know, which means that the city still has the opportunity to spend up to 60%, so anything that would come back would still be able to be expended for that purposes within the timeframe of the year. Now, I mean, the city already does enough tourism, if you will, to qualify no matter what, because the Main Street program, almost everything they do at the mill brings in folks, for instance, you know, some of the things out the Pine Mountain, all of that could be labeled as tourism under the Georgia law, so...
Danny, would you look at a 50/50?
Would you, let me ask you a question now, do we all, do they have to come to us for approval of anything, all the expenditures, or do...
The council will set an initial budget, and will be able to direct that over to them, and then your hands are out of it. Under Georgia law, you're not allowed to direct beyond that how the money is spent.
Don't they have to report back to us what they did with it?
They will report back to you on annual basis, yes, sir, so you always have knowledge, and certainly, you know, you want that dialogue, you want to know where the money's being spent, you want, you know, feedback, so that would, you know, so all of that makes perfect sense.
Now, it used to be, ours was 60-city, 40-tourism, then it got switched, what, several, at least several years ago?
That secret document that he didn't prepare.
I think it, before, we were on, now, the advantage, if I'm clear on this, the advantage this Tourism Board will have, will that we're giving them staff, in a sense, you know, at the city expense, we're providing a staff person, at least.
Yes, because the purpose of this is that if it's effective, then, then we would put this into effect, you know, hopefully, because the DDA has to meet and obviously approve it as well, so my goal is by July 1st, and part of that also goes with the title change with the employee, there's a raise associated with that employee for the additional duties. Now, keep mindful, the one comment that came up is, you know, it's not on an annual basis of unspent return monies, it is if you terminate the agreement, they have up to three months to return the funds, as I understood the agreement as written currently. You can change it any way you want, you obviously get, you have to approve an annual budget, now that annual budget, you know, is based on the estimated revenues generated, so you're going to assign them a budget, and you have a contract, so you, but, but you can't get really below the department head, the department budget level, if you will. You can create buckets, and probably put percentages, but you can't micromanage or specifically tell them how to spend that money, under Georgia law, they are the governing authority of that money.
I think I'd be more comfortable with the 60/40 split initially, and see how that goes, we can always change it, basically, is it, it's set annually, correct?
You can change your agreements at any time, as long as the DDA also reciprocates, so you could change it every month if you wanted to, but, you know...
I think we should start off with the way the state puts it.
It all has to be used for tourism.
Put the motion out there.
I move to change the percentages to 60/40, city, DDA, take Collins' name off and approve it.
Second.
Just for the purpose of the record, so that we have it in, you're saying 60% for the City of Villarica and 40% for the Downtown Development Authority?
Correct.
That's state, put the state... Yes, that's in accordance with the minimum required by the state law.
All right, we start off minimum, work our way up, as needed.
Is this fund gonna be called Downtown Development Authority, or will it still be called the Tourism Board?
No, they, they actually have to have this in a restricted account, restricted specifically use, which is then reported to the state, so they, it's not commingled funds, it's not the DDA's, the, the, the governing board, under a structure that they've approved, where they have specific tourism folks that will basically direct and expend that money, but this is not the same as DDA.
Can you change the wording as well, if you're gonna change the percentages, David? Instead of listing it as Downtown Development Authority?
Yeah, wouldn't it be our Convention and Visitors Bureau?
DDA Tourism.
Well, it is, it's a contract that you have with the DDA, but the DDA as a component is taking on the duties of tourism, and then they've met, we've gone through the organizational chart, and Chris Pike is here, he, you know, he can certainly address to you the organization that was presented, and at this point, they seem all in, and would certainly want to kick the heels or the tires, as they say, and take it for a run, and they think it will benefit downtown in other ways, so, but, but, your agreement is with the DDA, and it's not uncommon to have agreements with DDA that perform tourism duties for you, in Georgia.
So our agreement is with them, what do you call this section, what do you call this, if it's not the Tourism and Visitors Bureau, what do y'all calling that, where that bucket of money's gonna sit for tourism?
Well, good afternoon, first of all, what we propose is that the DDA would appoint a tourism committee, that committee, very similar to how we have four committees on the Main Street, that's broken into the four points, there would be a tourism committee loosely made up of people from the hotel motel industry, someone, a representative from the Pine Mountain Museum, basically, this committee would be set up with people who would be utilizing the funds for promotions in tourism, so, maybe representative from DDA, so it's about a seven-person committee that will make recommendations to the DDA on how the funds should be expended, but it just makes sense for people who are in the tourism business to kind of give direction on how that money should be spent.
I totally agree, you would not want me telling you how the money should be spent, you need people that know about tourism.
You made a motion to approve with the 60/40 split.
Yeah, the city's 60, the DDA's 40.
Second, all those in favor?
And Collins' name comes off.
Okay.
Number three, council appointment, Villarica Development Authority.
Can we kind of wait on this till Tuesday, we just, we're still, seems like getting applications?
Let's just make a motion, we'll move it to Tuesday.
Okay.
We're just holding it.
Yeah.
We're not tabling it, we're just putting it to Tuesday.
Move it to Tuesday.
I don't know if anybody wants to discuss any aspect of it, but we're still getting applications.
Council appointments go to Tuesday. We are going to, number four, the powers of the mayor pro temp, and Mr. Mecklen.
Yep, four and five are somewhat combined, in that, as everybody knows, the City of Villarica has set off on somewhat, well, I was gonna say uncharted waters, but they have been chartered before, we have operated at least once before during my tenure without a mayor, and were able to successfully survive during that period of time, so I'm convinced that we can survive again. If you remember back when Mayor Teddy Lee was, was once mayor, but then because of deannexation, was no longer mayor, we went for probably six months, I think, with, before we had a special election, and Monroe Spake, who was on the council, got elected to be the mayor, so we find ourselves right now without a mayor, anybody in the office, sitting in the office of the mayor, and so I got to looking back to see exactly what powers the mayor pro temp has, because we all assume that the mayor pro temp would be serving in the capacity as the mayor, since we have a vacancy. Well, the existing charter is silent on exactly what the powers of the mayor pro temp are, other than that they are to preside at the meetings, it doesn't say what else, what other powers they do have. Because of that silence in the existing charter, I thought it appropriate for us to essentially create some rules under which we are going to live under during the next six months, so that we all understand them, so that the public understands them, and we can hope to avoid any type of controversy during the period where we don't have anybody sitting as a mayor. I had sent out this memorandum to you on May the 20th about, you know, just raising this issue, and I submitted a proposal on how we could perhaps come up with an ordinance, I got feedback from a number of you, and that led to the drafting of the ordinance that you see under number five, which is just a proposed ordinance that will better define what the mayor pro temp's duties will be in the absence of a mayor. Most of the feedback that I got from council members was that you believed that the mayor pro temp should continue to have the right to vote as a council person, but that the mayor pro temp should not have the same power granted to the mayor, which was to veto ordinances. Under our charter, the mayor who is elected citywide does have the power of veto, and of line item veto, and a budget, whoever is serving as the mayor pro temp that gets elevated to serving in the place of the mayor will not have been elected citywide, and it's reasonable to think that they should not have the same power that's actually granted to a mayor who is elected citywide. So that's, that's the essential proposal here, is that in the absence of somebody in the position of a mayor, that the mayor pro temp is elevated to the position of interim mayor, that they would continue to have a vote as a council person, they'd still have the ability to make motions, or to second motions, they would preside over the meetings, they would have the power to sign contracts on behalf of the city, they would have the power to show up on ceremonial occasions to represent the city as the interim mayor during this period of time, but they would not have the power to veto.
As I understand it, though, this is applied to the interim mayor, the mayor pro temp doesn't give these powers, only if he's elevated to the interim mayor position.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And that's in the case, you know, I tried to look at this so that we're not just looking only at our current situation, because there are other situations that can come up, the situation where Mayor Lee was removed, I've had another situation in a city I represent where the mayor got indicted, and that, under state law, you have an automatic suspension of their term of office if you have a public official who is indicted, and so, there are a number of different ways, somebody could just become temporarily disabled and unable to come to a meeting for three months, so you have a lot of situations where you could have either a permanent or a temporary vacancy in office, I attempted to draw this up so that it would cover all those circumstances, if you have a mayor pro temp who was elevated to the position of interim mayor, then the council would elect a new mayor pro temp to fill that role of second in command, and then, you know, if the interim mayor were to go out, then the mayor pro temp would move up again.
Sorry.
Up until the point where we get down to we have less than four people, because our charter does say that we have a required quorum of four people.
I liked what you wrote up, I mean, it just makes perfect sense.
Any special way to handle a charter revision like this?
I think we have the power just to adopt it by an ordinance, which simply requires one vote on one meeting, out of an abundance of caution, I'm gonna suggest two things, one is that we go ahead and handle this as a home rule amendment, which would require that we not only pass it on Tuesday night, but also to pass it again on the first meeting in July, so that you've essentially voted it in twice, which is what is required on a true home rule charter change amendment.
Okay, so this one goes to Tuesday night?
Yeah, I would say we vote on this Tuesday night, I think it's a good idea to float it out to the public, so that they can understand what's happening.
Well, is that covering four and five, and will as well cover five Tuesday night, David, in your statement?
We only need five, four.
Yes, four just raises the issue, five is the solution to it.
Yeah, we only need five.
Okay. Hold it till Tuesday night, the Douglas County Splotter Government Agreement, Mr. Milliron and I, for the City of Villarica.
There's number five, we haven't, the city attorney hasn't addressed number five.
I thought that's what we did.
He was just addressing it.
There's, there's two issues about a charter review, are you talking about...
Number five is the one that came up out of the retreat?
Oh, okay, yeah, that is a separate issue from this, and we have had a proposal from the moderator of our retreat to assist the city in reviewing and revising our charter, which was one of the issues that was raised as a major concern during the course of the council retreat. We have received, is this the issue you're talking about, you know, we have received in a proposal for that, and I've looked at it, and I thought it was a good proposal, I'd like to bring it up again on Tuesday night, and with some recommendations on it, I thought it was a good idea, it was essentially to get Mr. Weed, as an outsider, to make some recommendations to us on a revision of the charter, and his proposal sounded reasonable to me, and sounded like it would be of good value to the, to the council.
Where's the list, is it all buried throughout this document, the list of his suggestions?
No, he hasn't made the suggestions yet, we have to decide whether or not we're gonna hire him to make them.
Oh, okay.
And this is a prime example of why we want to review our charter, look at the situation we ended up in, all of a sudden we don't have a mayor, and our charter does not, did not allow, it didn't give us any way to kind of proceed forward, what to do, because we didn't have a mayor, and Mayor Pro Temp didn't have the powers to pull anything, so...
So David, you've actually seen some of his suggestions, and...
Well, he hadn't made suggestions yet, but I do believe that he is competent and capable to make a thorough revision, I mean, he hasn't, he hasn't made the study yet, because we hadn't agreed to pay him for it.
All right, we're not tied to anything he's doing, right? Any suggestions he makes?
No, no, I mean, it's still, still gonna be up to the council to approve any suggestions that are making, and once he makes those suggestions to us, I think that we would want to carefully review them, and make sure that they fit for us, I mean, Villarica is an entity unto itself, we have local traditions, customs, beliefs, that we would want to make sure that whatever he suggests to us will fit us and will work for us.
Okay, I would suggest that on this agenda, we use number four as the revision to the charter that David has proposed, and use number five for the charter review contract.
Right.
We've got to separate these two things.
Well, all right, so powers of mayor pro temp is an ordinance.
Yeah.
Yes.
The charter review is an agreement to move forward with Murray Weed...
Murray Weed.
To do a charter review of the entire charter, come back, and then what I heard is your city attorney wants to add or stipulate some additional things on the proposal that comes to you on Tuesday, is that, is that correct?
Yes, I don't think they have Mr. Weed's proposal in here, so...
It was emailed to them.
Yeah.
Okay.
We were, and it's not, it's not included in following what we have all set out to do about the transparency, I'd at least like those figures to be put in for Tuesday night, David, of what that cost is gonna be.
Yeah, so people...
I think I see the confusion, I see, now I know why, I see why Councilman Carter's confused, so, is your ordinance, like, starting number five, or is your charter starting number five? I have an ordinance in here.
I start with charter.
Five says charter review.
Mine.
You're saying charter review?
Yeah. Mine does too.
Mine as well. That's, that's number five, and then we came along with his ordinance, which really wasn't number four, he already had the number four, which...
Four was powers of mayor pro temp.
What's this one, notice home rule amendment? Oh, and I was admitting, so is this, this isn't, this shouldn't be where the charter review is.
No.
Is that number four?
I think the charter review is the Murray Weed issue, and that's just, I mean, that's why I was combining everything together also.
Okay, so I'll get the Murray Weed proposal in your books, so that, we gave you a copy of the charter, we emailed you the proposal, we'll include that in the packet for Tuesday, but you'll still have a copy of the charter.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, we'll move the ordinance to number four.
We'll just add the proposal in.
Yeah, yeah, which is what I just moved, because, because it was in the wrong place in my book, now I understand.
We probably need a special call meeting to review the charter, after he gets through with it.
Well, I think after he got through... Well, I think after he got through with it, Mr. Mecklen was going to actually look at it first.
I'll look at it, and then we all need to look at it.
And then we all need to look at it, right.
Move on to number six, and before we start that, I'd like to do a shout out to Mr. Milliken. I know for a fact that you've spent a tremendous amount of time on this SPOST intergovernmental agreement, and this, if you don't know, Douglas County is contemplating putting the SPOST agreement on the November the 8th election, and for the past six or seven years, we've gotten zero dollars from special purpose local option tax from Douglas County, because every nickel that they've gotten in has gone to pay for their jail that they needed, and state required it, and the whole nine yards, so it was legitimate spending on their part. But David, I really appreciate, I know you reached out to several people and got committees, and I hope this is, I hope this comes to fruition for us.
Thank you. Members of the council, what you have in here is a memorandum that brings you up to speed as to where we are with the proposed Douglas County SPOST referendum. This council had authorized me to do the administrative negotiations, and we've had great cooperation with Douglas County, the city of Douglasville, and also the city of Austell. The basis point for negotiations generally is where do we start? And I didn't feel comfortable starting with 2010 census data, and so I had gone and approached the SPOST negotiations with the mindset that the Douglas County side of Villarica has substantially grown, and that if we, as a unified body, could all get on the same page and agree where a starting place is, then from there, we could actually look at the proposed money that would come from that. We have collectively agreed to use 2014 population estimates, which is of great benefit to the city of Villarica, and our counterparts have agreed that that's a good idea. Now, keep in mind, when I say agreed, all this agreeing is all at the administrative level. It's the governing bodies now that have to take all these administrative negotiations and decide if we've negotiated in your best interest, and that we're all on the same page. And, you know, when you're collective and united together, and you stand together united, that almost sounds like someone's campaign speech, but at the end of the day, then the public recognizes that you all have operated in good faith and transparency. So we held a county SPOST meeting at Pine Mountain to gather input, and then from there, I then met with each of the departments to review the needs on the Douglas County side of Villarica, because obviously the money would be restricted to all capital projects on the Douglas County side. From there, then, I worked with Mayor Pro Temp Williamson, and then further with Councilwoman McPherson, and a stakeholder group of Villarica residents in the Ward Four. And great things come when you keep folks fed and you keep the caffeine running, because it was a, one of the meetings was a four, four and a four and a half hour marathon meeting, and no one was allowed to leave my office until we hammered out everything. So the net result of all of this was, if you start with the 2014 population estimates, that means that what you see on your screen is that the city of Villarica is operating on 5,924 residents, or 4% of the pie, if you will. That then, if you go to the next page, equates, and you'll see an uptick, by using the 2014 money, obviously our population growth has been great since the 2010 census. So then you see that you are looking at, and you've got to love these numbers, 6,829,999.42, which I tried to round off to 6,830,000, but they kept going, that one dollar, and that dollar's going to come up in a minute, I assure you. So in working with all of the stakeholders at the table, there was four buckets that were created for the Villarica use of any SPOST money that comes to fruition. Keep in mind, you have your county projects, but this is the local share of those revenues. Those buckets were transportation and streets, water and sewage, public safety, and parks and recreation. As we go to the next page, you'll see the proposed bucket list that had come out of this, that allows transportation and streets to have 31.9% of that 6.8 million, or specifically Water and sewage, 27.1%, public safety, 25.6%, and then parks and recreation, 15.4%. Now, there's very, very specific uses of SPOST money and how it can be used, and so as you move down, we'll take transportation and streets. The other approach that, when I went to the negotiation table, you get a lot more with honey than otherwise, so I approached this as Villarica and Douglas County really need to be a strategic team on a number of these projects, because this city cannot go at it and do it alone. And if we try to do it at alone, you're really outsourcing, and that just escalates the cost. So the projects, the first of, the priority projects of the 2.18 million on transportation streets was a joint project of a city-county project for renovation improvement of Tyson Road, that was 200,000 assigned to it. Yes, it will cost more than 200,000, but this is just our local share of that, that's not reflective of what the county would put to the pot. A proposed joint city-county project for renovation improvement of Mirror Lake Parkway. When we did the engineering study, you obviously have the road that traverses the dam, basically there was roughly about $80,000 of immediate safety needs, but as a large scale project, if you truly brought that road up to GDOT standards and addressed everything over a seven-year period, you're talking the 800,000. The joint city-county-state project for renovation improvement of Liberty Road, south of Interstate 20, north of Pool Road, this is if you bypass the Hess, which won't be Hess much longer, and you go around the curve and you see all of the guardrails smashed and took out. It's not a simple process of just going in and replacing the guardrails. Number one, GDOT has new standards for guardrails, you couldn't even replace the guardrails with the same type now. Number two, there's a grade issue on that. And number three, the shoulders aren't large enough to even accomplish GDOT standards. However, it further gets complicated, because you have part of that that's state, part of that that's county, and part of it's city. So again, all of us have met out there, and we have agreed that the city's portion of this out of SPOST would be 150,000. And then you have renovation improvements of roads, streets, bridges, sidewalks, bicycle paths, including resurfacing. They've allocated a million dollars to those projects over the six-year period of the SPOST. The next bucket is water and sewage. They've assigned 1.85 million as a proposed. This is for replacement improvement of water supply and distribution pipelines, 1 million dollars. So that you know about half of Ward Four is still on galvanized pipelines. We want to get rid of those expeditiously, and that was something that residents spoke about very passionately. The second is, is that when Mirror Lake was built out, it was built out very fast, very furious, and then when the downturn in the economy happened, all infrastructure stopped. So you have a lot of dead-end lines that aren't circulating, and that's why a lot of the smelly water issues occur more in Mirror Lake than any elsewhere in the city, is because there's nothing circulating those water within those pipes. You then have the replacement improvement of sewage lift stations. Again, half your city, half of the lift stations are in the Ward Four area, it's an area that grew, it's also going to be an area that's going to grow exponentially, and you're going to have to address all those aging lift stations and the additional lift stations, so you have 550,000. And then you have water or sewage capital outlay projects, again, these are for additional unnamed projects that are capital outlay that would be approved by this council. The next budget was 1,750,000, and it was assigned to public safety. One thing that the residents brought up very adamantly is that they wanted to support the police department, they love the police department, but they also wanted to see the police department outfitted in vehicles. They also would recognize that we have a shortage of vehicles for the take-home, and they want to encourage more police officers living in the city. So they wanted to commit 600,000 over, that's 100,000, or the equivalent of three cars fully outfitted per year over the six-year SPOST. They also had brought up a purchase and acquisition of a police substation and training facility. They believe that over the next six years, with the proposed exponential growth of the Connors Road quarter and the Mirror Lake Ward Four area, especially with the, all of the lots in Mirror Lake being bought out, that it is projected to be the most populous side of the city. They recognize that the community loves the police station downtown, and it should stay here, but at the same point, they would like a substation, they said that they had tried one previously, but it was done out of the Mirror Lake facility. And in talking with the police chief, we can also drive economic development, that if they acquire a building, they can also have it as a regional training facility and bring in police from all over the western Atlantic area. And in doing so, they were also saying that if you're going to acquire a building, and yes, there is a building that was named multiple times, I would prefer not to name it in public, because if we have to go after it, we don't want to escalate the cost. But this would all be specific of the SPOST being passed anyway. But they did assign 350,000 in the round tables to renovating and improving any administrative building that the police had on the Douglas County side. This was attached to the acquisition of that building. The last bucket was parks and recreation. One thing that the round tables was very aggressive on is renovation improvement of the 159-acre passive park on Connors Road. You see 750,000 assigned there, so that you know the master plan, the topo, and the site survey alone is about 100,000 for that. Then you, and then to put this into perspective, when you talk about the Fullerville Trailhead project, that project not including matching funds from the city is about 550,000. So that gives you sort of an idea, that's a pavilion, parking, you know, trail space, et cetera, that it's not really a trail, it's a trailhead. So when you look at things, now, they did not go in, they were very respective of the fact that there's a process that's going to work through that park, and that's your Recreation Advisory Commission that's going to work and present up through to the council exactly what their vision is for that park. So the round table was very respective of that process, saying that we want to, it's very near and dear to us, we want to sign money over a six-year period, but we don't want to dictate how that money's to be used. Then there was renovation improvement of the scenic railroad and CP Huntington train engine at Pine Mountain Gold Museum at Stock Mar Park, that was 150,000. We certainly recognized during all of the discussions that there's some rail grade issues that need to be addressed to make that train safer, and then be able to eventually add cars to it, and that came up. And then last but not least, there was a lot of discussion in the round tables about expansion of the Pine Mountain Gold Museum at Stock Mar Park. They believe that that's a premier park, and there's opportunities to expand that park. The discussion went along the lines that the, you go there for, to ride the train, you go out there to pet the animals, you go out there to, you know, walk the trail or gem mine, but what is there to keep bringing you back? You know, so there was quite a bit of discussion. Staff did convey to the group that there was a proposal that had actually come out of the Mirror Lake community that would provide a gold museum-type putt-putt-themed attraction, where families could come out, have a little snack bar out there, and sort of keep coming back. There was nothing written in stone attached to that money, obviously, they knew that the council would have to air ideas and ultimately have to make a decision. At this point, everything that you see is a draft document, it's not binding. I've talked to you about the percentages, so the next item in your agenda is the actual intergovernmental agreement. This is an agreement that each of the municipalities in the county would sign off on. I have highlighted in yellow, starting on page two, the city's buckets and percentages accordingly later in the document, but on page two, you'll see that our buckets are the transportation streets, water and sewage, public safety, and parks and recreation. And then as you go into the document, I believe it is near the very end, yeah, I think it's the second to the last page. A1, you'll see that the city of Douglasville has already assigned their projects, they have transportation streets, 45%, public safety, 10%, parks and recreation, 25%, facility infrastructure, 20%, and then you see city of Villarica with the 6.8 million, 29,999. See, I told you that dollar was going to come up. And by the way, Vicki, the dollar was swiped from your bucket, because it was all the way, it was smallest at the bottom, so I guess you noticed that that dollar was swiped from your bucket, and I conveyed that back to the round table folks. And then you have the appropriate percentages there, that dollar did not affect the percentages. So at this point, that's the end of the staff presentation, it's now up to the council to decide if they are comfortable with those buckets, those percentages, and if so, you can at any time approve the intergovernmental. Once this governing body approves it, or if it doesn't approve it, that's another issue, but once you approve it, it then goes back to the county. The county has stated that in July, at its July meeting, it would then like to make the call for the SPOST, and then officially put it on the November 8th ballot. So thank you.
David, let me, I want to ask a question. Are these buckets that you did, are we, are they attached to the intergovernmental agreement? Like, 800,000 for the Mirror Lake Parkway. If we don't spend 800,000 on the Mirror Lake Parkway, can we utilize that other 200,000 in another form of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you are committing your percentages of money received, and you cannot deviate from those percentages.
If you got 41 point, or 21.7% in parks and rec or whatever, you have to spend that 21.7% in parks and recreation?
Correct.
Correct. But you, we can move it around if we had to put sidewalks in.
Things will change.
Okay.
Let's say that the city deannexes the, God forbid, the 159 acres, well, it wouldn't be in the city anymore. So, you know, this gives you a little latitude. In all the discussions with the municipalities, the county previously got itself in a rabbit hole by very, very specifically, finitely putting projects and amounts to it, and then found themselves unable to spend certain funds.
I just want to mention two things. All this is contingent on what happens on the ballot in Douglas County in November.
Even if it's like...
If it's voted down, none of this happens if this, if this SPOST continues, it would be a continuation of what they already have, correct?
No.
So it's new? It's new to them, they voted it down prior?
No, 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 let me clarify. All right, you are expiring the Level One or Tier One SPOST, which was for the jail.
Mm-hmm.
There's going to be a gap, so this is a call for a new SPOST, not an extension.
Okay.
So there will be months that we are in where no SPOST money is being collected, so if it is approved on November, then, then starting at a point, I think there's actually set points, several months into 2017, they'll actually start collecting it, and then later in the year. in the year. If it does approve and does pass in November, then I will come back to the council with a resolution. That resolution would say, this referendum, call for SLOST has passed. This would then allow you to expend money and reimburse yourself from SLOST funds as they come in, or any project that you move forward on. That way, you don't have to wait until 2018, for instance, to go out pave a road. You can go ahead and pave it, utilize fund balance, and then as the SLOST funds come in, repay yourself.
But the main point being, November is when it will be decided.
Well-
It's when the Douglas County side will decide when this happens. Let me, just one other thing real quick. One thing that I thought was extremely impressive, and I was so happy to see this happen, is those four hours of meetings, that involves citizens from the Douglas County side who are involved and active to be a part of this, and I was just so happy. It wasn't just staff and government officials deciding, this is what we're going to do. No, it involves citizens that are active and involved over there, all working all those hours to try to figure out what the priorities were for that side of town. So I was just really glad the way it happened.
Thank you.
And this will be decided on, in July, even if Douglas County goes forward, we're putting it on the agenda. It hasn't even been decided by Douglas County if they are going to. I think we all feel confident that they will, have no reason to think that they won't, but it still won't be decided until July on whether they will even go forth-
Put it on the ballot.
On the ballot.
Yeah, I've gotten notification from Douglas County that they do plan to put it on the agenda for consideration in July by their governing body. They had hoped, but see, it's all timing, we didn't have a meeting. The reason Douglasville has already moved forward, they already had a meeting. So they're hoping that we approve our intergovernmental agreement as quickly as possible, so that they can then get it appropriately on their July meeting. But they are going to put the call forward, their governing body, to decide if they'll make a call for the November election.
So you answered my question, whether or not to wait till Tuesday. It sounds like we need to do it now.
Your motion to approve the intergovernmental, hear motion?
Move to approve the agreement.
All those in favor?
With, with that being said, before we go on to number seven, I'd like to take a moment and call for a point of personal privilege. It'll be tough, so I'm coming down.
Do we suppose we have anything for number seven? I don't have any.
This is not a, this is not a public comment.
Yeah, pick it up, sir, Mike. Pull it out.
This is not a public comment, and I've written this, so I'm going to read it as it's, as it's written. And I've had some very good people to go over it and say, they're good with it, so. This is a very sad day for me. And you'll see, it's a hard decision I'll have to make. I spent a large portion of my adult years in and around Villareca. I've seen it prosper and grow, and I've also been here during the hard times for this beautiful city. I proudly tell people that I'm from Villareca, and I always hear positive responses. My wife, Tina, and I moved here 16 years ago and started our new life together here in Villareca. I will tell you truly, those are two of the best decisions that I've ever made. I've always tried to give back something when something was given to me, and our city has given me a lot. Almost immediately, I got involved with our community and the local things that were happening around us. That eventually led me to our city government. I knew nothing about politics, and I think that was one of the more positive things I had going for me. I was surrounded by friends and neighbors who continually asked for me to run for Ward Four City Council seat. I finally gave in and agreed to it. Ward Four is different than other wards, because its entire population is in Douglas County rather than in Carroll County. I knew a lot of people from Douglas County, because I owned a business there from 1978 to 1992 in Winston, Georgia. I felt I would be a needed link between the two counties, and I do believe I have helped to connect the two entities. Douglas County Commissioner Chairman Tom Worthing has always given me his ear when I needed assistance, and for that, I am so appreciative. He has been a real friend of Villareca. Because of our mutual friendship and trust, Villareca has been able to get a lot of assistance from Douglas County for the last four and a half years. For instance, Douglas County partnered with Villareca to finish several roads and subdivisions that were left unpaid by developers during the downtown economy. Douglas County assisted in paving the parking lot of our new library located solely in Carroll County. Douglas County recently paved the intersection of Punkin Town Road and Dallas Highway. Douglas County worked with us on numerous projects along Connors Road, and also helped us with Mirror Lake Parkway by voicing strong opposition against ever closing the road over the dam. Villareca now has a Douglas County inmate crew assigned specifically to Douglas County portion of the city that is dedicated to litter control, right-of-way grass cutting, and park maintenance. We will utilize that same crew to assist in the new 159-acre passive park as it's developing the months to come. Douglas County is also assisting the city with installation, a preemptive signage at Connors Road and Mirror Lake Boulevard, so vehicle traffic can get diverted away from stop trains and bankhead highways. And most recently, Douglas County has played a major role in working with the City and State Department on transportation for roadway improvement solutions at Connors Road and Bankhead Highway for a company that wants to add 1,000 new jobs over the next five years. Be remiss if I failed to mention the cooperative efforts Douglas County has extended our great city with respect to the possibility of a SLOST referendum on the November ballot that could yield as much as 6.8 million dollars for much-needed capital infrastructure upgrades in Ward Four. As you can, has and will continue to be a positive force in Villareca's future. Our city manager, Mr. Milliron, has worked openly and very positively with the Douglas County side, and that too will pay huge dividends for the future. With all of this being said, it leads me to where I am today. I've always been one of those people who did not like unfinished business. I've always liked to cross the finish line. I like to cross it first, but if I don't cross it first, I at least like to cross it. However, I'm not going to be able to do so. Here's Ward Four. My wife, Tina, and I, we purchased a home for future retirement approximately two years ago. We, we felt we both wanted to experience the beach and the ocean life in our retirement. Our plan was to retire there after the term was up in 2018. This is one of the harder parts. Unfortunately, my wife's mother, who also lives in Florida, was diagnosed with lung cancer this past year. My wife has been driving back and forth to Florida to be there for each of her radiation treatments, as well as her chemo treatments. She's also attended each of her, her mother's doctor's appointments. Family ought to always come first, and we both understand life is short and not to take it for granted. We made the difficult decision and have hastened our plans to move to a moot Florida, and that's what we're going to do. That is why such a sad day for me, because I'm going to have to resign from my council seat effective June 30th, 2016. I will continue in whatever capacity to assist this city that gave me so much and ensure a smooth transition. I will always remain humbled by all of the people who gave me the opportunity to play such an important role in the city's history, and am so proud to have served Villareca and Ward Four. I realize the timing is not optimal, but I hope each of you can understand I must do what is best for my family. In leaving, I know Villareca will be in awesome hands, because there are four council members, and our city manager and city attorney are also proud to say that they are committed to Villareca. You may not always agree with all of their decisions, but you will never be treated any more fairly or equal than these people sitting here with me today. I thank each and every one of you for your support. I ask for your pardon, and I'll include you in mine. Thank you, and God bless you.
Now, we will move on to call for the special election.
Well, on the special election, we've known for several weeks now that we replace the position of mayor, and I've had a number of calls asking how we could do that, what's the quickest way we could do that, how do we fill that position? And I have done extensive research, talked to just about everybody I could think of within the state and local government to see if there's any way we could do it. Or more quickly than having a special election that would coincide with the November 8, 2016 general election here in Georgia. And the simple answer to that is no, we can't. That is, the, the opportunity that we have is to fill the vacancy for mayor, and soon to be the vacancy as of July 1 in Ward Four, will be through a special election. The only other option to having just a special election would be for the city to go and ask the governor to appoint someone to fill those vacancies. That is a policy decision that the city is capable of making. The reasons not to do that are going to be that because you are going to have a special election, regardless of whether or not the governor would have, there's strong thought that it simply wouldn't be fair for the city to be making any type of recommendation to the governor as to who ought to be appointed to those positions in order to give everybody a full and fair opportunity that chooses to run for them to run a race for it. So with that being in mind, unless the council is, you know, essentially unanimous, and you wanting to go to the governor to say, appoint somebody, my recommendation is that you issue a call for a special election to fill the vacancies in the office of the, at that time, the vacancy in Ward Four. I plan to have a proposed call for the special election. I don't, I've gotten one drawn up. I don't know if that's been distributed to anybody, because, but I plan to have it to you on Tuesday for you to look at, so that you can determine whether or not to go ahead and call for the election. It would have to be called, from a legal standpoint, by at least the beginning of August, in order to not put ourselves in a time crunch and to give the election superintendent plenty of time to be ready. You know, I don't know of any reason why we couldn't go ahead and vote to issue the call next Tuesday. If you want to put it off to July, it would be okay to do so. We wouldn't be under any time of, time crunch, but, but we know for a fact, we've got to fill the position of mayor. As of a few moments ago, we know we've got to fill Ward Four.
I agree with you 100%.
I totally agree. David, when would we set the restrictions on time to qualify, length of time to qualify?
That's all right.
Well, it's going to be the qualifying would begin Tuesday, July 19.
And how long?
At 8:30 a.m., and it would terminate on Friday, July 22.
Usually goes a week.
Start off.
A week. Yeah, it's four days.
Yeah, okay.
Has to be a minimum of three days, can be a maximum of five days, so.
Yeah, normally, it's one week in August, so, okay.
So that'll be in your proposal then for Tuesday, that we-
Yes.
That we, that we vote on?
Yeah, so that everybody knows it.
When will we have a copy of that, if we want to vote on it Tuesday? When will we have a copy?
I think you'll probably get it.
Have it later tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Does the election superintendent have anything to say about that?
He's got everything to say about it, and he said it.
Okay, okay.
Will I not have to resign again Tuesday night?
No.
You've got to reread that in the same measure, but this time we'll get your tissues.
Let her put it under the screen, they can all read it.
Yeah, important to remember also that, you know, our elections here in Villareca are not the simplest in the world, because we are dealing with two counties. Fortunately for us, the Douglas County Election Superintendent and the Carroll County Election Superintendent work pretty well together through an agreement between their offices. That's why qualifying will take place in the Carroll County Election Superintendent's office by an agreement between Douglas and Carroll County, and also through our contract with the Carroll County Election Superintendent. He is serving as our municipal election superintendent. So, all the plans, I think it can go smoothly. There'll be a lot of questions to be asked, but we'll move forward. Along with this, something to add on the agenda probably for Tuesday night is, you are currently serving as the Mayor Pro Tem, and after we pass this ordinance, will be serving as the interim mayor. In light of your announcement, it probably would be appropriate to elect somebody else to be the Mayor Pro Tem, because right now, we don't have a Mayor Pro Tem, other than-
Totally agree.
Yeah.
Totally agree.
It'd be an item to be added to the agenda to discuss on Tuesday night.
That Mayor Pro Tem then becomes interim mayor since we pass the charter revision?
Well, not until July 1st. If you pass the ordinance, Mike is going to be the interim mayor until June 30.
So we need to hold off on the ordinance until?
I don't know of any reason why.
Need to pass it now, because you need, there's documents that need to be signed.
It's going to be an automatic trial, I think.
We've already, we've already-
I would say that we need to pass the ordinance first, creating the mechanism of having an interim mayor, which Mike will automatically assume, that would last up until June 30th. But then on Tuesday night, sometime after you've passed that ordinance, then you would-
Elect another year pro tem.
Elect a new Mayor Pro Tem, so that he or she would be ready to take over on July 1.
If we don't pass it, you can't sign the ordinance, that then it's going to make you the interim mayor and then allow us to have a process.
I just need to hold up on signing everything after we pass Tuesday night?
Yes.
Come down and then sign what we need to sign Wednesday morning.
Correct. Yeah, once you get interim mayor, you have to do the signatures.
Is there anything else before we go into executive session? To executive session, meaning to discuss a vote and enter into a contract, purchase, dispose of a lease of property, meaning to discuss and deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, pursuant to a current attorney-client privilege provided with Georgia Code Section 50-14-2, paragraph-
I move we go into executive session.
All those in favor?